It's 6:07 and I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, August 17th. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellman, would you read our community prayer?
Yes, sir. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we may have been allowed to serve, and they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bellman. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
Come on down.
All right, seeing none. Let's see, we have a request for appointment, Kevin Bradshaw to the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Disposal District. Mr. Bradshaw, would you like to step up? Thank you, and thank you for volunteering.
No problem.
We have your application here. Is there anything you'd like to say to the board?
Can you just pull the mic toward you?
Yep.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. None, really. I just want to serve the community. I've done a lot in Boy Scouts and everything like that, and that's winding down, and I figured I'd do something else for the town.
We appreciate it. Anything, any questions from the board?
No, thank you very much. We've been looking for you for a long time.
Mr. Bellman.
Hi, Kevin. Hey, we were in Boy Scouts together, so we have some familiarity here. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. The district needs three members. You make the third member, which is great, and I look forward to working with you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to a point.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll get...
Get in touch with me, okay?
Yeah, I'll email you.
Guys, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. All right, next we have another request for appointment, William Garnett to the Earth Removal Committee. Is Mr. Garnett here? I don't believe so.
I think he said in his email he couldn't make it, didn't he?
Yeah, I believe you're correct.
Think he's away.
I think so.
Any questions or thoughts from the board?
No, I'll make a motion. Will you approve, Mr. Garnett?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to bring this up, and I did send him a message about, because he is a town employee too, that he filled out the acknowledgement, which is great.
Absolutely.
Of conflict, so I thank you very much for that.
Thank you for pointing that out. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. All right, next up is an InStar EverSource poll hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll go ahead.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
In a second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there someone here from EverSource who would like to speak on this? All right. I don't see anyone. Thoughts from the board?
All right. In disclosure, I believe that the project that these polls are being put in for came before me when I was on the planning board, and that will in no way impact my ability to act on this public hearing as a Select Board member.
Okay.
With that said, I have some confusion as to why we're having this, because the polls are already in.
Okay. Let me just ask, are there any members of the public here who would like to address the board regarding this? Okay.
So I guess my, it would be twofold. One, how were they able to go in before it came to us? Because I believe it's already been to Concom, too. So how did they go in the ground before they came to us? And follow-up, does the policy need to change so it doesn't happen where in the future another thing comes to us asking to put polls in and they're already in the ground?
Good questions.
So I just have a thought about that, and I don't know, I haven't been down there, Jen, you probably have, but it does say on the site plan, "proposed." So maybe these are four different polls.
Nope, the numbers, they match.
Ah, okay.
So, because I kind of had the same thing, because I wrote down, and yeah, I noticed. So I make a, can we make a motion to hold off on this for another date?
Sure.
For them to come in and answer questions?
Let me just ask, Mr. LaFond, have you had any communications from EverSource or anything regarding this?
They have contact at our office.
Okay. All right. So you'd like a motion to table?
I'd like to make a motion to table and have them come back in front of us and answer some questions.
All right, our next, our next meeting...
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So our next meeting is Wednesday, September 8th. So would you like to request that they come back on Wednesday, September 8th at say 9:10 to address those issues?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to close the public hearing?
No, we can't close it.
No, we can't close it.
Oh, that's right.
That motion to table should be really a continuance.
Continue. Okay. Shelby, so you can notify EverSource, this has been continued till Wednesday, the 8th at 9:10?
Shelby thinks there's already a hearing scheduled for 9:10.
Oh, okay.
So you have a suggestion for, I mean, you can schedule them at the same time. You just have to, that's the simplest way to do it.
Well, why don't we schedule it?
Yeah.
Whichever one has been previously scheduled, we'll go first. Okay.
Yeah. Well, on the, on the planning board, when we would do this, when we would continue public hearings, we just had to say to the next date. We didn't have to establish a time when we continued it. I don't know if that's how this board does it, but...
It has to be a date and time, sir.
Date and time.
Okay.
All right. Next is a presentation from Carver Cares, the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition from the town.
Welcome, folks.
Hi.
Thank you for all you do.
This isn't hooked up, so...
Okay.
One second, he's coming.
Whoever the spokesperson is, if you could use the mic when you speak, please. That way everyone can hear.
So there's a microphone on the table, right there.
Okay. Great. We can all introduce ourselves. Amazing. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. We're with the Carver Cares Coalition. We're all going to do a quick introduction. My name's Caitlin McSweeney, and I'm the prevention coordinator for this coalition, and we're excited to be here tonight. Thank you.
And I'm Scott Neef, Superintendent of the Carver Public Schools. I've been working with the coalition since it was founded.
I'm Carol Spiewakowski, and I've been almost here as long as Scott, and just concerned parent.
I'm Melan Castelli, and I am a resident of Carver. I think I shut your mic off. I'm a resident of Carver, and this is my second year with Carver Cares.
Good evening, I'm David Glass. My wife Debbie and I responded to a request from Chief Doofly approximately eight years ago through the Carver Reporter, looking for help for addressing a problem with substance abuse in the town of Carver. So, do I do the history of the name?
Did I first slide?
All right, so to start off, the mission of Carver Cares is to bring the community together to strategically prevent and reduce substance use and misuse among youth and adults in Carver. We provide education and increase awareness and prevent substance use and misuse.
I'm sorry, could I interrupt? Could you hold the microphone really close, because people at home can't hear?
Okay, sorry about that. Do you want me to repeat myself?
I heard you, but I don't know.
Okay.
You may want to.
Okay. Sorry about that. So our mission of Carver Cares is to bring the community together to strategically prevent and reduce substance use and misuse among youth and adults in the Carver community. We provide education, increase awareness, and prevent substance use and misuse in the town.
So a little bit of the history, because I was actually involved in the founding of this group, and we actually started this group called Mobilizing the Community, and then transitioned to a group called Carver Cares. And it really came out of a level of concern within the school system. At the time, I was the principal at the middle high school, and also in the community. And I'm sure that members of the board remember, there was actually a very tragic month, I believe, we believe it was in, I believe it was in January of 2013, where there were actually several fatal overdoses from opioids within the community. Those fatal overdoses did not impact the school setting. I believe most of, they were mostly people in their twenties, but they were graduates and students and former students of the Carver Public Schools. And within the school system, we also had a concern about the level of substance abuse, both with opioids and non-opioids, and also alcohol abuse. And we said, this is reaching a little bit of a crisis situation within the community of Carver. And obviously, the community was seeing the same thing, and David referenced Chief Doofly. So the Carver Police also partnered with us and said, we need to come together as a community and say, what can we do to support all of our citizens? From our students to elderly, maybe some of our elderly, or grandparents who are raising young kids, because substance abuse was impacting everybody in the community of all ages. And the goal really was that this was for us all to come together and say, what can we do to increase people's information, give people more information, provide, and provide supports? And one of, I think one of the greatest things that this group has achieved, and we're going to see throughout the presentation, is that through a number of different avenues, we are helping in providing supports to people of all ages within the community of Carver in dealing with the impact of substance abuse on individuals and also on families. And we do that through a wide variety of approaches. And it's also really has been a community partnership. So, you know, one of the first goals of the group was to actually bring an SRO into the school system, and I think that happened because the group actually garnered public support to support the SRO position. And Chief Doofly has actually been a tremendous proponent of the SRO position, and we've worked really well together in supporting that. But then we brought in, we brought in people like these outstanding community members who may have ties to school, may not have ties to school, who have just gone above and beyond to support the organization. So that's a little bit about where we've come from, and we've, we've had some, we're going to see that we've had some different grants that have helped fund us. There's some grant applications that we have out to help us keep this going. And our goal here this evening is community awareness. We want the community to know that we're here. We want, you guys will be like, why do we give him the mic? It's like, there's a lot more than what that says on that slide. You know, and we want the community to know that we're here, we want, we want the Select Board to know we're here, and we're looking to gather support throughout the Carver community so we can all continue working together on substance abuse within the area.
Thank you. So Scott mentioned a lot of this. We have amazing partners and presence in the community. You know, our Carver Public Schools, law enforcement, our awesome residents and volunteers, local businesses, churches, and also we partner with Plymouth County Outreach, which I'll talk about in a moment. We are present at all of the events that we can be in Carver. We were recently at Carver Night Out, an Old Home Day. We go to farmers markets, health fairs, other big things in the area like the Plymouth Waterfront Festival, and most importantly, we host our own annual overdose vigil in September, because we felt that it was really important to have our own here in town to commemorate those who have lost their lives to addiction. So looking at the data we have, Plymouth County Outreach is a partner that shares data, and they're able to collect the number of incidents that happen, overdoses that happen, whether they're fatal or non-fatal, and they actually provide follow-ups in partnership with Carver Police Department. They go to someone's home, you know, after an overdose, and provide resources, support, and share information. And a lot of folks were skeptical when that program started, but we've received, you know, a lot of positivity and people really willing to accept the supports and services. So this is a data here in, from 2017 to 2020. So in Carver, there were four fatal overdoses in 2017 and 29 non-fatal, one fatal in 2018 and 18 non-fatal, five fatal in 2019 and 11 non-fatal, and two fatal in 2020 and eight non-fatal. However, we also track something called at-risk referrals, which is fairly new, so we have, don't have too much data on it, which is why we're coupled with Middleborough here. We're trying to do a better job of that. An at-risk referral is getting to somebody before they reach the point of an overdose. So between Plymouth County Outreach, Carver PD, and our amazing group here and our other partners, we try to reach people before, you know, someone who's suffering with substance use disorder has the point of an overdose. So the goal of our at-risk referrals is to continue to grow those numbers, so it's positive when we see the higher those numbers are. So we hadn't had any at-risk referrals in 2019, but we're working on still raising awareness about this program. So we've had nine referrals, at-risk referrals in 2020. So we're continuing to work to grow that number and let people know that, you know, you don't have to be to the point of an overdose to get services. We are here, we want to provide support, and there are avenues to do so. You can contact Carver PD, you can contact us and get you connected. There's really a lot of avenues to get connected to resources and information.
Can I just talk a second? So I wanted to mention PCO for a second, and as I said, the board members may know this, but Carver was actually one of the founding members of that group. It started with Plymouth and East Bridgewater. The chiefs in Plymouth and East Bridgewater said, you know, instead of just responding to an overdose, we need to be taking preventative action. And Chief Doofly was actually the third person in, in that group, and Carver was the third community in, and said, we're gonna, if there is a fatal overdose, or there's an overdose, there's got to be a fatal overdose, we're gonna come out to the house the next day, and we're gonna partner with places like High Point and give treatment options, and we're gonna work with families, and we want to be a preventative organization. Eventually, those three expanded that to all of Plymouth County. I believe there's 27 communities in Plymouth County that are all members of PCO. And now that model is actually being looked to be replicated across the country. So Carver was really on the foundation of this model that's been developed, that is being replicated, as I said, across the country. And I think we, we as a community should take some real pride in that, and the Carver Police and the role that they play in that has been tremendous. And they're really branching out to provide all types of services. Just last year, we had a training at the school for all of our staff that was funded through PCO, through this organization, on child trauma, and how staff members, teachers, ESPs, administrators can support students who are facing a range of traumas. It could be from substance abuse, it could be from other trauma in their life. And, you know, PCO is kind of an ever-expanding organization that Carver should take some pride in, that they were one of the founders of.
Thank you. So looking at our success as a region, so Carver Cares is grant-funded from the state. So I'm a coordinator through High Point Treatment Center, and we have a grant called the Substance Use Prevention Collaborative, so it's a regional approach. So we are part of the Plymouth Area Prevention Collaborative, which includes Plymouth and Middleborough, and recently has added Wareham. So this is just our numbers over our last five years as a grant, how much we've reached people in our region that's been tracked. And so we've had, we've reached 23,000 youth, 74,000 adults, and have tracked almost 6,100 volunteer hours. So we have really been trying to get out there again, provide resources and reach people. You know, we, we try to focus with youth around substance use prevention and education and the impacts that substance use has on the developing brain, and adults, you know, reaching who might have someone in their life that's using or struggling with substance use disorder. And then our awesome volunteers, like you see here, really help make, make these events possible and keep our coalitions running. Without volunteers, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be able to continue the great work that we're doing. Anyone want to add? So a little bit about our grants. So I mentioned the SAPC grant, that was what we currently have through June 30th. We have three main initiatives, sticker shock, social norms, and social marketing. So I'll explain each of those. Sticker shock is a process where we have youth create a sticker through the schools or youth-serving organization that reminds adults not to provide alcohol to minors. So we've had great success here. We have had 100% participation in all those seven stores that, so alcohol in Carver, we continue to get interest, you know, from store owners, like people recognize us when we go in, and the youth really get excited about the opportunity to, one, design something and be creative, and then the opportunity to go in themselves and hang up those stickers or clings in the clear windows at the liquor store. So it's a great community-building opportunity and an opportunity for youth to really see the community, go into a liquor store, see what it looks like, and, you know, engage with people who might be buying alcohol and remind them, you know, not to buy for minors. So we have great, we've established great relationships and partnerships through this initiative, and those are some examples of our stickers on the right side of the slide here. We also do social marketing campaigns, including a photo voice project that's not listed on this slide, but photo voice is a great opportunity for young people to really use their youth perspective and see what they're seeing in the community and how they can make a change. So we have a student group called the Karen Crusaders, and they're able to, you know, be the liaison from the school to our coalition in front of you here, Carver Cares, and provide their youth perspective and their experiences around substance use and how they see that in their community. So photo voice is a way that students can use cameras and capture photos, and we have a conversation about, you know, not only substance use, but mental health, adverse childhood experiences, things that are tough. We know COVID has been really tough for everyone, so we are trying to expand our message to be more mental health-focused, because we know that oftentimes kids that are using are self-medicating or on sports teams and are just struggling with pressure, peer pressure, pressure to do well, pressure to be perfect. So we really try to focus on the youth voice and give them an outlet to express healthy alternatives and talk about coping skills and talk about what's their reason to not use substances. Similarly, through our social norms campaign, we're able to bring speakers in. This is an example, Stephen Hill. We did a virtual event because during COVID, we couldn't have anyone in person. We were able to provide an opportunity for Stephen to share his story of recovery and resilience, and it was really powerful and impactful to those who were able to attend and just have an opportunity to hear from somebody, be able to ask questions. You know, the speakers we have are typically in recovery or have, you know, exposure to someone in their family who has used substances or suffering from substance use disorder. And, you know, having that connection is so powerful and knowing that, you know, you're not alone, you know, people have struggles, and it's okay to talk about them. We're really trying to smash those silos and stigmas that often are associated with substance use disorder and mental health. And I think, you know, it's, there's still a long way to go, but we've come a great way so far in doing that. So these social norms campaigns provide an opportunity to normalize that it's okay to struggle, it's okay to have challenges, and, you know, it's okay to talk about it and figure out healthy ways to deal with your stress. So looking forward, we have applied for a grant called the Drug-Free Communities Grant. So we're hoping that we could get that grant, it would award the town of Carver $125,000 for its prevention efforts. So that would fund a full-time coordinator and also initiatives throughout the whole town of Carver that, you know, provide resources and supports. In an area like Carver, where we don't have a lot of our own organizations that support this work, we're able to, you know, work with our partners and be able to provide funding to continue our work moving forward. And so since our SAPC grant ended June 30th, 2021, it's, now we have a newer iteration called Mask Call 3, so we'll continue to work there, and also in addition with the town of Wareham, which makes my position less involved in Carver. So we're hoping to continue to receive support and funding, like Scott said, to keep, keep the coalition going, keep it moving forward, keep doing the great work we're doing, and expand that, because there is room to grow and do more in the community. So we're really looking forward to doing that.
If you could just use the microphone?
One thing that I could focus on that's really important for our group, and that's to be aware of the difficulties that parents and grandparents are having, because the grandparents, myself included, by the way, are responsible in many cases for taking care of their kids' children. It's not an easy thing to do. I'm 83 years old. I never expected my life to have spent the last three and a half years bringing up a now four-year-old boy. It's a challenge, and my wife and I, most of you know Debbie from Century 21, have had quite a challenge. So we focus on our own experience in understanding how grandparents are going through this difficult situation, and we provide, we provide resources for them. They come to our tables in tears in many cases, and I share the tears right with them. But after that, I give them the resources that they need and the contacts that they can make to help them deal with this difficult problem. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. If I could just, I just want to thank you for all the work you do. You know, I've had a chance to attend several of your events, the vigil at the high school, and I see you at all kinds of community events. I've met the folks from Plymouth County Outreach, I've had the opportunity to meet multiple of the Karen Crusaders at a number of events, and I just think the work you do is so important to the town, and you're such a credit to the town and inspiration. So I just, I want to thank you for everything you do. And I want to open it up to the board as well, Mr. Bellman.
Yeah, I haven't been to any of your events, all right, very busy no matter what, but I thank you very much for all your help here. And just a few, I don't know if you guys have broached these subjects yet or not, but our two local hospitals, I work at Beth Israel and Toby, we have a lot of patients that come in that deal with these issues, too. So I don't know if you reached out to them at all and any resources they may have to pass along to you guys, too. And then we are going to have a marijuana store in South Carver, and you have stickers here and possible stickers that you guys could create for that one, too, and I'm sure they will be happy to address that. But I want to thank you guys very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, thank you. Yeah, I remember some of those very early meetings, Mr. Neef, in the high school, and it was with some sad students, Students Against Drunk Driving, and...
Sad transition into the Karen Crusaders.
Yeah, that's right.
Same group.
That's right. And I remember all of us at the time being, maybe not all of us, but a lot of us, being surprised how open the kids were to explain it. It's not so much alcohol, it's drugs that we're dealing with. And that was, that was pretty awful. So I thank you for, for all you've done since then.
Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman?
I just want to thank everybody for the great job you're doing, and keep up the good work. We all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Bogart?
Wait, wait, wait. I want to say thank you, too. And to you, the presentation was great. You know, a lot of people have heard of Carver Cares, but for, you know, all the people watching this, I would love this to get out further, because this was beautiful. So thank you to you and, you know, to everybody, and let me say my thank you, too.
We're happy to share this presentation for any way that you want to, you know, get the message out there. We're happy to share it.
Thank you. If folks want to get involved, how can they get involved with your organization?
Yeah, so we're very active on social media. We're Carver Cares on Facebook. If you don't have Facebook, our Karen Crusaders have Instagram, CMHS underscore Karen Crusaders. We also have a website, carvercares.org. We host monthly meetings, we have working meetings, we try to go to every event, so we're pretty accessible. I know Scott Neef, you know, you can reach out to Superintendent Neef, Chief Doofly over at the Carver PD, really any of our awesome volunteers here, we're happy to get you connected and hope to see you at a meeting sometime.
We haven't set our meeting day yet, next year.
We haven't set our meeting day yet next year. Every year we kind of shift, so we can't say that it's going to be the third Monday because we kind of make the decision year by year. And I don't think we've selected one meeting yet for next year. We do meet once a month.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Our next item on the agenda is an update on the enforcement issues at 149 and 152 Plymouth Street. And there we are. So, Mr. LaFawn, we are at 149 and 152 Plymouth Street.
Yes, I passed along to the board, I believe, last week. I have spoken to the resident, the owner of 152, and he is prepared to meet with the new building commissioner to get instruction as to how he can come into compliance. As you probably know, we do have a building commissioner slash zoning enforcement officer who started yesterday. He is aware of this complaint. He has visited the sites, so he will be prepared to move forward with some sort of, well, with the appropriate enforcement. So it has been frustrating, I know, very frustrating for the residents up there, very valid complaints. We have the tools now to start moving forward with the enforcement. We just haven't had the ability to do that very well. And as I mentioned, I did speak to one of the residents, and he informs me that he is prepared to come into compliance once he's instructed how best to do that.
Comments from the board?
Well, I would like to say that I'm very glad that we have a zoning enforcement officer now in the full-time building commissioner because that really has been an issue in town.
Yeah, I too am happy because I got another message from somebody saying that there's another issue coming up in this Alkave area too. So hopefully that these complaints that have been generated over the past few months and years that they finally get to, do get addressed, and everyone is entitled to living a peaceful life in their neighborhood and in their house and their property. And when it's interrupted on a daily basis, it's just not a healthy environment for you to live in, and that's something that we all have to take care of.
And I will also say that I think what happens too is when you don't have the tools in place, it becomes a culture, a culture of non-compliance, a culture of people believing that they don't have to comply with the laws. And I think that's what's happened over some period of time. So hopefully over the next couple of years, that will begin to change again.
Mr. Hoffman.
I just had a question on the building that was in bad shape.
That's 149.
149, okay. One of the emails we saw that I got, I thought it said that there was a notice to demolish that building. Is that correct? That was never enforced?
I'm not aware of that. That has not been articulated to me by the building department. I know from my own experience, that can be very difficult to enforce. That can take, I believe, maybe even up to a couple of years to actually get that to happen. It does, it can happen, but usually you have to go through multiple rounds of court action for that to happen. But I'll look into that, Jim. That's the first I've heard that it's actually been condemned.
Maybe I misread that. I think we got a general email, didn't we?
Yeah. I mean, what came out of, if I remember correctly on it, is that he had to demolish it or put the fence around it and put the notices around it. And by putting the fence around it, that satisfies the law from what I was told. But other things can happen because there's issues of rats, whether they're coming from that area or someone else's house, we don't know, all right? But then there's also the other businesses that are being done on that property too and being continued there. I drive by it and you see boats parked out there. You'll see RVs parked out there and trucks parked on the side of the road, offloading and unloading stuff. So I mean, there's an inherent issue, not just with these properties, but other ones in town. And it's a burden on our residents, and we have a duty to start enforcing our laws.
Mr. LaFawn, this is clearly an item of importance to the board. Would it be possible that we talk to the new building commissioner and include this as an agenda item on our next meeting? Maybe he could join us.
Certainly.
And update us on where things are. Is there anything else? All right.
Yes. Can I say a few words on this subject here?
Well, normally that would be done during citizens' participation. I'll...
You can say specifically and that will open the door.
Well, in history, that's always been done during citizen participation, but I'll allow it in this one time.
What I want to say is I live in Winham Shores, and I pass that place every day, one way or the other. But I want to tell you, that's a historical district. All of that whole area is historical. Why is a historical district allowing something like what Bob Elbin just said? I see that all the time. What's the power of the historic district? Why do we have one?
It's a good question. I think the board has concerns, which is why it's on our agenda.
Well, I think the new building commissioner should know that we have, that that's part of the historical district.
I think he should too. Thank you. All right. Our next item is a discussion and possible vote on the Forest Street Property Memorandum Understanding.
I guess that's mine here.
You can have the next two, Joanna. Picnic Island is the next one.
Thank you so much. Well, I guess it's going to be my night.
I hope you got the right information. Earlier this morning, I was talking with Rick, and the document that I had received was not the correct one. It was one that was originally, we originally had, which was not correct.
The one that the board has in their packet is correct.
Okay, great. The memorandum of the beginning part of it is dated. Everything's correct on that, and it's kind of boilerplate all the way through. And then when you get to the ones, twos, and threes, this is where the add-ins come. The town shall convey, that's pretty boilerplate. That's the same. Number two is, number three is the area that I approached our committee to let them know that that's not the way it should have been, the first one. And I educated my committee because they're all brand new and didn't know how we were doing it in the past. Rick allowed me to meet with him and Katie Klein. She listened to my story completely. I talk a long time, but she listened. She got it. Not so much the first time, but she got it because we stayed right with her, really, we did. That was eventful. And she came up with a language which we approved. Now, I took this language to my committee the last time we met, the redevelopment, and I asked them to please read it and vote on it, and they did. So this is the approved from my committee as well. So I'm here tonight to ask you to understand it, ask me all the questions you want, and I'm hoping that you do approve it and sign. And I can take your signed document back to the next week, the 23rd, we'll be meeting with the redevelopment. So we have that opportunity to sign it as well, gather it with a deed that you people signed as well, this MOU, and the Board of Appeals variance that we got as well. And that would conclude the night. We're not going to close on that till the end of the year. Mr. Williams has, he's going to get gathering permits. He has to go to planning board and so forth and so on. But this is the main part of it for us, so we're glad to get it going.
Thank you. Questions on the board?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Belbin.
What was the sale price of that?
Okay, I did the math, $150,000. We're going to get 10%. And I'm giving you a rough idea about $8,000, all these interim costs that we have incurred, I would tell you. And if you subtract that, it comes from $127,000. If you subtract 37, 9, 44, 71 taxes, the bottom line is $89,055.29, give or take a little bit, that will definitely come back to the town. And as it says, there will be two checks drawn, the first check, one of which will be the back taxes, and the second check will be the $89,000. And that vicinity will come back to the town to be put back into your treasury. So...
Just want to make it clear that the redevelopment authority is going to get their 10%, plus you're going to get any money that you spent to get that property up to stuff.
That is correct.
And what they've done on that property, because it was there, but they've put the borders, actually, because there was an issue with where the actual property lines were and everything.
Yes.
So there's actually stakes in there?
No stakes, stone.
Stone, stone, concrete, whatever.
Ooh, this is important.
But they're on each corner of it. So, and they perk tested too.
We did, and we had the zoning board of appeals. We went from 150-foot frontage to 200, which is today's. We got it shovel-ready.
Right.
That's basically what we were doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all your work with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
I'll make a motion. We approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of Carver and the Carver Redevelopment Authority for 90 Forest Street.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And if your approval can continue to do the signage, we'd appreciate that. So Rick would be able to send it to us on Monday.
We'll sign it after the meeting.
Thank you so much. And he told me I could stay.
Can we get a copy of the signatures for both sides?
You should. We're going to be titling it. I'll make sure Sharon comes back and gives you it.
Send us a copy, just so we know that it's signed, because I know one that I saw.
Would you want the title when it goes to the registry? You want that?
Just a memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
That we have a copy of both signed.
That would be good.
I just have one quick question. Do we have a notary to witness our signatures?
Yes, Elaine is a notary.
But Elaine's not here tonight, so do we have to wait to sign it until Elaine is back?
You may have to.
Why don't you, when is Elaine back?
Because our town... Elaine is back next Tuesday, I believe.
Next Tuesday? So if members of the board could make an attempt to come back in sometime next Tuesday and sign it. All right.
And I'll double-check that to make sure everybody's...
So we won't, our committee meeting is the 23rd, which is Monday. That'll pose an issue at this point, not a big one, but...
Well, there's other notaries in the bill.
Yeah.
That's true.
We'll deal with that, yeah.
All right. We'll deal with it. Mr. LaFawn will notify you when he has the signature.
Very good.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. And our next item is the approval of the Picnic Isle Order of Taking located at Winham Pond.
Oh, very good.
Joanna's been working on this a long time.
Yeah, almost two years, almost two years.
Would you like to speak to it?
Oh, sure. I love it. I take it Katie has organized and created the correct information for the registry?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sharon, I think, Sarah, I believe the other one would like to speak.
Thank you, Joanna. I was just going to add that we've both been working on this, and Katie Klein, who's our, one of our lawyers at KP Law, worked with Joan Pierce from Fishing Game, who is going to hold the conservation restriction on this, and they worked out the language. So everybody's happy now. It did take a while.
Good, good. All right. Anything else from the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the order of taking.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna, for all your work. And the order of taking, Mr. Chair, has to be filed at the registry within 30 days.
Okay.
Just so we all know, we have to sign it.
That's, that is fine. All right. Our next item is discussion on having wells checked for PFAS and protecting the wells. Mr. Belbin?
Yeah.
You skipped 715, the MBTH?
Oh, yes. My apologies. That's right. A discussion and possible vote on the MBTA Advisory Board Select Board Appointment. Mr. LaFawn was kind enough to inform me last week that evidently I am the Select Board's MBTA Advisory Board Appointment. I had no idea that I was, and I'm willing to continue serving should the board want me to. If somebody else would prefer to take this responsibility on, they are more than welcome.
I make a motion. We approve Mark Townsend as our representative to the MBTA Advisory Board.
Second that. You don't get off that.
I thought you were going to discuss the burden that this puts on you, your family and the time it takes to...
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I'm just going to add in, it's pretty crazy. You get to be the CEO of the town of Carver, according to this document. So does that make us all like the vice CEO?
We're just the Os.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Now, we will move on to a discussion of having wells checked for PFAS and protecting the wells. Mr. Belbin?
Yes. I was informed by a resident that they had their wells tested for PFAS, and I'm not an expert here. It did show up in it, but it wasn't at the target level from what I saw. And there is a program to test wells. So I went online and I applied for it, and I got notification that they will test my well. But I'm sure that information will get out there. But our town wells, we should be testing that. And I understand that for this contaminant, we're not required to until October to test it, but there's no sense we can't do it a little sooner and be ahead of the game because what's going to end up happening is when October hits, you're going to have all these towns all going ahead trying to test at the same time, and you're going to get results months and months and months later. And if we get ahead of the game, get them tested, we'll probably get our results a lot quicker than we would if we wait till October. So there's nothing saying we can't test it early, but I think we should.
Thoughts from the board? Mr. LaFawn?
There's no objections. I don't know why there would be. I'm certainly happy to facilitate that, Bob. I mean, something like our North Carver Water District, their wells have been tested for PFAS.
So we have...
But we've got other ones.
Town wells too that are there.
All right. Any thoughts from the board?
But I think that's a good point you bring up though, Bob, about the service through, I think it's through UMass that people can get there, can get on a list to have their wells tested for, well, for free. I know we've had several people in town that have done that. The results, obviously they go to the private party, but they also go to the local board of health too at the same time.
All right. All right, moving on. We have the reappointment of election officers. The list was posted on the website, and we have a list that will be posted in the minutes. The town clerk, Cara Dayhill, did reach out to me and asked me to add the name of Mary Ross to the list. She inadvertently left Mrs. Ross off the list, so she has asked if we would consider that. And is there a motion?
I move that we approve the 2021, 2022 election personnel with the amendment of adding Mary Ross to this list.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Mr. LaFawn, the town administrator update.
Yes, you have in front of you what, in the form of a spreadsheet. This is a little bit updated from the one in your packet from the, over the weekend. And the items on here, COVID Cares Act slash ARPA. We still have our two largest submissions that have yet to be approved. Those are currently under review. I know this because of the questions that we get from the county. Also, even though they can't tell you what the expectations are in terms of, you know, deadline dates for approval, I have it on pretty good authority that one should be forthcoming within two weeks. That's the 289. So I have attached, and this is Mr. Hoffman's request, unfortunately, it's not a lot different than last time, but the submission request that we have, I have is August 16th. We have the submissions. We have those approved. We have the outstanding. And what I wanted to demonstrate too is down the bottom, as I have next to number 11, this will be our next submission. These are costs attributable to the school department would be primarily technology. EMS would be... primarily technology. EMS would be for stretchers, power stretchers. They require only one person to utilize. And then the O and M, the 124.7, that's a combination of two things. One is the replacement of the HVAC system in this building, as well as replacement of the doors out front, to be touchless doors. So as you can see, if everything is approved, we would actually be in a deficit of $12,500. Obviously, well, I guess it's not obvious, but we have to presume that not everything on here is going to be approved in its full form. So we actually are putting together yet another submission on top of this. I would rather apply for more capacity than we have and then leave any funds on the table. These are for anticipated costs through the end of December this coming year. The other thing I will bring up is that the ARPA, as you can see, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, you've probably heard a lot about this, but for the town of Carver, our amount is approximately $1.2 million. That, and it's very, right now, it's seemingly pretty broad as to how those funds can be expended. We got our first disbursement, the first half of $615,000 that is sitting right now in the bank. One thing I would like to point out, yes, our total is 1.2 million. The recovery plan, the funds through that, we have to make sure we keep in mind, these are one-time funds. There are still, as always, the specs follow god knows how many months after the, the funding is approved. So we want to be careful how we spend that money. The four criteria or general provisions, one would be for revenue replacement from the, due to the COVID-19 emergency. That's a very onerous process to demonstrate. Expenditures that have caused negative economic impact, including assistance to small businesses, households, and economic recovery, premium pay for essential workers. I can tell you that that tends not to be what's going around in the region, you know, additional funds going to, when say essential workers, usually it's first responders. In investment in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. When you, when I read through all these, you know, what occurs to me more than anything is broadband infrastructure. One, I'm not sure how far $1.2 million takes us, but I think that's something that I think we can start looking into. It doesn't do us any good to try to replace revenue. It doesn't do us any good to, in my opinion, to pay essential workers additional pay over on what they, people have already been compensated. But in terms of expending funds in a way that doesn't have future cost, operating costs, I, I believe that infrastructure would be the way to approach this. So as always, again, there are specs yet to be released by the federal government, and hopefully that will make it a little bit easier for us to interpret, you know, exactly what the caveats are here. So, so determining, working with our cable company to find out exactly what $1.2 million gets you on broadband and how to approach that. Steve Mahoney at the school department is somebody who I'll be consulting with to try and at least start to get my arms around it.
Look, can I ask you, Mr. LaFond, with the, with the CARES Act, obviously, we needed to pay for items first and then submit items to Plymouth County for reimbursement. Is the ARPA handled differently? With the ARPA, are they sending us the money and then giving us a list of guidelines? We can send it?
That is, that is correct. It's not a reimbursement program.
So...
You know, the concern, though, is that until there are more definitive specs, you know, you don't want to spend money that ultimately gets audited and you have to, you know,
Well, that's my, that's my question. So is there, is there an audit process in place? Or is that yet to be determined?
These are, you know, yet to be developed, yes.
Thank you.
Again, this is not a criticism of the federal government, but it does move slowly.
Yes.
I just had a quick question on the CARES Act. So the ones that are still waiting to be, they're currently under review, I should say. So 111.3 for the 289?
Yes.
Is there any reason why that one's been so long? Do they tell you or?
They have, the answer is not really. They don't, they don't give us a lot of information. They do ask for a lot of receipts, which are already contained within the package. Some of these, I know, I don't know if it was the 289 or the 313, I actually got in the habit of bringing them down there personally because on, it may have actually been originally the 289. I resubmitted that multiple times because apparently the technology was not sufficient to have it all in one pack, and I sent in three packets. So now I'm in the habit of sending it and also hand-delivering these. So, so, but in short, I don't have any really good information as to what, how, why their review is taking so long, other than I know there was a backlog. The size of it, as you can see, you might wonder, well, maybe it's, you know, because it's such a large number, it's taking longer to review. In my prior conversations with Tom O'Brien, he assured me that, that it doesn't matter. Because my, my suggestion was, well, what if I break these up into smaller pieces? Would it be, you know, would the funding be more forthcoming? And he assured me that that's, that's not how it works. So, so I'm, I'm hopeful that in the next week or two, that at least one, if not both of these, will finally be approved in some fashion.
I just wonder why the 289 was still under review, but yet the 94 and 149 were already approved. So, okay, thanks.
It's a very valid question. So, okay, moving forward here. I don't have an update on the open space plan at the moment. I don't know if Sarah has anything she'd like to comment on.
We are going to be meeting on Thursday, this coming Thursday.
Plymouth Street Water, Mr. Fogg has a follow-up communication going out to the residents explaining the fact that we've had to submit a plan to DEP from our engineer with the town's, the board of health's recommendations as to how to treat each of these 19 homes. If you remember going back in time, we had a meeting and we, we had hoped and we expected the DEP would give us that guidance. We had no reason to believe that they wouldn't. That's why they were coming to the meeting. Subsequently, they did inform the town through the board of health that they wanted the town to put together a proposed plan for how to deal with these 19 homes. So that plan has been submitted to DEP. Mr. Fogg expects that by the end of next week, DEP will provide some feedback or at least some approval for the plan. At this point, we don't expect much guidance, other than that it looks good to us. So at that time, in fact, this coming week, Mr. Fogg will have another communication going out to all of the residents, informing them of this develop, where this stands. And hopefully, after, you know, after the beginning, the beginning of next week, he'll have a good idea as to exactly what a, not a deadline, but a point in time where we can be reasonably assured that we can have a productive meeting with all these, with all these homeowners. There is, the draft plan exists. What is being submitted, or what has been submitted at the moment, I'm happy to get that to the board if you'd, if you'd like. I just want to be, be careful that, that there isn't a, I guess, a dispersal of information that DEP hasn't actually looked at first. So as long as everybody would understand what they're seeing, then I'm happy to get that to the, to the board in the next couple of days.
So, Mr. Chair? So if you do that, that's, we should consider that definitely a draft plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes, right. As we've discussed earlier, we do have a new building commissioner in place.
Mr. LaFond, if we could just go back to Plymouth Street, if you could just address connecting the five houses with the more urgent need?
Thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, the last time we discussed this, we had a question about, I had raised a concern about whether or not hooking up these homes separately over some period of time would be considered potentially a bid, a bid split. We did have town council give some consideration to that, and town council has informed me that he does not believe that that's the case. Primarily because when you're splitting bids, you're usually doing it with the intent of trying to break up a bid for, for ease of procurement. So he did look at this rather carefully and did advise that if we were to do the five homes, and then we did more, additional hookups later on, that, that would not be bid splitting specifically because they're in the consent order, and it is not the intent of the town to do that.
So we can move forward and get these five folks their water as quickly as possible?
If that's the board's will, yes, yes, you can. And I'm sorry.
Yeah, to go along with that, I know it's a draft plan, but when our final plan comes in, that we get a copy of that, what the final plan is?
Yes, in fact, what will happen is once the, Kevin will ultimately, when he communicates with his residents, he will send them a copy of that plan. So we'll make sure you get a copy of that.
And then the next meeting that they do have, that we also include the North Carver Water District to be available for that. So residents can go ahead and ask those questions, not just the health agent, but they be there because there's an issue that people wanted to talk about that. And again, if we can get the state to come down at some point to...
Well, we shall invite them.
Yeah.
As Mr. Fogg said, if we have to go pick them up, then we'll send an Uber. We'll, we'll do that too.
Ms. Owens, did you have something? Was I, I thought I heard.
No, thank you.
So, Mr. LaFond, are you saying, if it's the will of the board, do we need to take a board vote on whether we connect the five houses that have?
I would appreciate that direction.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we hook up the five houses as soon as possible. I'll second that.
Mr. Townsend, and I'm hoping, is that something we can vote on?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering that as well. It's down here as a town administrator update. It's really not here as an agenda item.
But on top of, right above executive session, it says the board chair recently anticipates the following matters will be discussed and or voted on at this meeting.
That, that's right. Mr. LaFond, do you have thoughts on this?
I would suggest that unless there's any opposition, I will move forward with getting these homes hooked up as soon as possible.
Without our vote?
Unless there's any objections, I will.
Are there any objections? Hearing none.
So we'll withdraw our motion?
So, Mr. LaFond, are you advising us that we no longer need a vote?
I would, I will advise you that, yes, you don't need a vote. We're going to move ahead with that.
Alright, thank you.
And, you know, so Kevin has received three, three quotes. I think he's received two. He's waiting on one more for providing service to all 19 homes. Obviously, that's going to be split a little bit, but that's a process that he's been going through. And it would seem that the cost is going to be much more, much less than we had, had, had feared. So...
Good news.
And we, I'll say what the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry to get you off track.
Different facets to that. So, building commissioner began yesterday, and he's already been formed, informed of some of these many zoning issues and concerns that we have. So he's going to be moving, moving ahead on those. Our finance director begins on September 20th, and she's going to begin transitioning from our current interim town accountant slash finance director. In fact, that's actually starting to happen tomorrow. Lakeview Street, on July 1st, we met, some of us met with members of the CPC, COA, Rec Commission. We met with Buzzards Bay Coalition representatives for a site walk at 44 Lakeview. The Buzzards Bay Co., well, we requested their presence to basically get a sense of, you know, you know, what would you do at this property now that we own it? But what would you do? What kind of options would, would you consider? When we finally got to that point, and they understood what we were all doing there, they, they did provide us some, I don't want to say some guidance per se, but they did, they will be going back. They will be getting some, some recommendations on possible consultants we might want to use to, to deliberate. I believe you were there too, Sarah, weren't you?
I was, and there were two Conservation Commission members there too.
Okay, alright. So we haven't received input back from them yet with regard to our, the mission we gave them. But hopefully, in the very short term, and I know Savory has been following up with them too, we'll get some feedback. So rather than, I know everybody's anxious to try and find something to do there. I think it's important to, you know, take our time and make sure that what is done there is best for the entire community. So it's a slow process, but I just want you to be informed that, you know, it is moving forward, and we hopefully have the right people involved. Ultimately, you know, we certainly want to deal with the recreation activity, you know, specifically pickleball over, you know, behind the council on aging. But once again, until we get a little more feedback, you know, we've been a little bit reluctant. We certainly, in my, in my mind, we want to have some proposal in front of the CPC this year for construction of pickleball courts. So we want to, we don't want to lose sight of, of the timing of that too. And our library AC, we are, Kevin, not Kevin Fogg, Dave Seaton Top has engaged the services of engineer to, to review what the needs are, as we're all painfully aware that the HVAC, it's 22 years old, has not been functioning properly for a number of years now, and ultimately needs, needs to be replaced in its entirety. The goal is to have project ready for the next town meeting, whenever that is, if it's, if it's in the fall or winter, depending on some, some other issues we have going on, to be prepared at that time for a fund, funding article for, for full replacement. And the Route 44 urban renewal has on all of our minds. The technical review accounts have been finalized. RDA is going to vote on this Monday. And the fire, I'm sorry, Joanna got me off track here. Fire Department's interaction with Jensen Hughes to assess the fire department's needs and concerns. That's just underway. And that was part of our conversation this morning with our working group. Some of the, you know, the fire chief is obviously very concerned about the requirements. Without any further information, he has to more or less presume a worst-case scenario. This is all, always leads to what might be the case of a possible town meeting vote with regard to zoning and building height. And I think we all agree right now that there's, there's so much information that we don't have, that it's, I, I think most of us are skeptical that we're going to have a fall town meeting to address, to address this. It has been helpful, I know, putting, putting everybody in a same room from the different disciplines. As we know, the, the owner of the property and the developer, they may not always be working in concert, and they sometimes maybe have little competing interests. So to put everybody together and to review really what people are hearing, because, you know, I'm getting phone calls, some, some members of boards and committees are getting phone calls, and it's, it could be a real mess if we didn't put this together. So I don't know if Sarah or Mark, if you want to comment on this, as you've been?
If I may? Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that this working group was pretty, was unanimous, actually, in, in asking Rick to be the, the go-between. Because if you have, because otherwise, they were calling up all kinds of different people and doing end arounds, or what looked like end arounds. I don't want to accuse anybody of anything, but just to have it go through one person and then back to the working group is, I think, really going to make the, the process much easier.
I think it's much easier, and I think it sends a message to the developer.
Absolutely.
We're united as a town.
We're united, that's right.
Mr. Jefferson?
Mr. Belvin? I have a question. I, when I found out about this working group, and I found out that the town administrator picked the chairperson and vice chairperson to be on this committee, and I had an issue with that, and I still do. And my issue is this, is that if a board of selectmen member is going to be appointed to a commission or a committee, we should be, the four, five members here, the ones to appoint that person to the committee, not the town administrator appointing which one of us selectmen here. I think it's inappropriate.
Could I address that, Mr. Chair? This is not a committee or commission. This is a working group. So, so there's not a, so there are two members of the RDA usually show up as well. The problem The problem is that if a board, say the board were to appoint you and Mark, for example, well, now that has to be a posted meeting.
Okay.
And we're in the, well, we're in the middle of negotiations, that's why you have a working group, so you don't have a quorum of any group. At this current time, they're having negotiations, and we're just there in our roles, that's all, we're not.
Well, you're really representing the board, though, being two select board members and part of this working group here, gaining information and whatnot, and we, as select board members, didn't have an opportunity to appoint you guys as, and I think that's wrong. I don't think it's right that the town administrator pick which board of members here should be on a working group. I think we, as the board members, should pick who's going to be on a working group. This is my opinion. Other ones have different opinions, please say it, but I'm putting it out there.
So I'm just, did I explain that right, Mr. LaFond?
Yes, some of the concerns that were raised, number one, there has to be, there has to be some way to bring this together, some centralization of this, there's no question about that, multiple departments that I had spoken to, we all agreed that this has to happen. One of, some of the other concerns that were raised is, well, if the, if a board appoints a subcommittee of the board for any purpose, whatever it is, then that, then they are effectively acting on the board's behalf, and any meeting of that board needs to be posted, there has to be minutes of those, and at this time, you know, we don't want to have a group that would have to go into executive session every time they get together, that's really not the point. The point isn't to be taking copious notes, the point is to just to make sure all the information all of us are getting is coming through one central place, so that concerns can be addressed, and really, information can be dispersed, so that's the goal, that's the point of not having a specific appointees. I know we have RDA members, and we've had a couple of different RDA members that have come to different meetings, we don't tell the RDA who to, you know.
That's true.
So, who to show up, I mean, that's really not, I don't think that's my place to do that, I don't want any quorums in the room, because I think that's now defeating the purpose. So that's, I mean, if this board wishes to handle it differently, that's fine, but I certainly, with or without any board members from any board, I certainly still think it's my responsibility to organize our departments the best we can in dealing with this project.
And I just want to say that it is my full intention to keep this board as updated as possible. I've asked the town administrator to include an item on every town administrator update going forward about this, to keep the board as updated on all the information as we can, so.
All right, and right now, it's a matter of trying to get our hands around public safety needs. Next Tuesday, some of us are meeting with representative, I'm sorry, consultant hired by the developer to begin a fiscal analysis of the project, that would obviously be helpful for the town, but we have to keep in mind that the consultant they're hiring doesn't work for the town. But the fiscal impact analysis will start next Tuesday, and obviously, we have to have the right people in the room for that, and then it's going to, it's going to shift over time as to what, who we need in the room at any given time.
So I have a question, then, so the working group that you're talking about, is that, so that's not set for every meeting? Like, I think you just mentioned that the RDA is a couple, not the same people show up every meeting, so.
Correct.
Could I just add one thing, Mr. Townsend? Sharon has been excellent, her and Savory are the ones that have, we have asked to continue to go on. In addition to that, Sharon, there might be a trail of emails where every kind of other meeting, or any kind of correspondence or anything, we're getting it immediately, because like Bob Belvin said, we don't want to wait for a whole meeting 30 days later, we want to know now. So, I must say, it's very difficult, but Sharon has been excellent on keeping us up the bill. And that's, Mr. Townsend, I think that's going to be your job.
So I guess my question is, does it have to be the two of you every meeting, for every working group? If someone else would?
That's up to the board, to be honest with you.
No, 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 it's not up to the board.
Doesn't matter to me.
You put the, it's like I'm missing something.
No, I asked, I obviously asked the chair to participate and from there, and not to put you on the spot, Mr. Townsend, but.
I think, I, so, I think there's a reason why you elected chair, and I think that's, I, so Mr. LaFond asked me to participate in the group, and I thought as the chair, I thought it was appropriate. I didn't realize he had asked Ms. Hewens as well until the first meeting when Ms. Hewens was there, so I was unaware of that, but I think there's a reason you elected chair, and.
And the vice chair.
That's all I have to say on the matter, right?
So now, now it basically precludes us from going to one of those meetings, because you two are already going to it, all right? So we don't know what's going on at these meetings, all right? We're not being informed, okay, except when we come here and we'll get informed here, all right? But also the fact that if there's anything for us to decide on, you can't be emailing it out to everyone, so be very careful with the open meeting law, sending it out to your members about things.
And that's part of the issue you have with this whole thing, is you do have the open meeting law, you don't want, I don't know what Ms. Clark is doing, but you have to be careful about quorums, and this is a negotiation, and I don't think we want an issue where the developer can have a representative sitting in these meetings, knowing what the town is discussing. Those are just my thoughts.
So I, I'm sorry, but I still have an issue with the town administrator picking which members of this board is going to sit on a committee. I think that's wrong, it shouldn't happen.
But if the town administrator doesn't, if we, if we as a board do it, then we have to take minutes, public minutes of this meeting, which the developer can then read.
Right, I asked the chair and the vice chair, by nature of their positions, as simple as that.
I've been on the RDA, I went through this process with them, the urban renewal plan. I would, I would have liked that consideration, to be totally honest. I don't know about the other two members that are here that didn't get picked, I just think it's wrong, I wanted it brought out here in the public to let them know that I think it's wrong. The town administrator should not pick and choose which select board members can be on boards, all right, or committees, or whatever, working groups, whatever you want to call it, and namesake. I think it's inherently wrong for that to happen.
I would say that's not a question for me, that's a question for the board, so. And realistically, if the chair and vice chair weren't in the room, everybody else would still be in the room who's in the room, you know, our public safety people, our finance people, we still need those people in the room, dealing with, dealing with the consultant, dealing with, you know, possible, you know, financial proposals, dealing with public safety concerns, you know, make, you know, trying to put this all together the best we can, with or without, you know, members of the select board, or even with or without members of the RDA, I mean, you know, we have to have those internal conversations about how we deal with the developer and the owner. Eventually, you know, there's policy that has to be decided by the RDA and the select board, but things have to get to that point first, and part of the concern is that, you know, we have different elements here between the property owner and the developer, who the, I almost hesitate to say this publicly, but the term of, you know, divide and conquer was something that was, a lot of us were concerned with internally, so trying to find a way to ensure that that didn't happen, that was my goal, and I think it's working quite well. If either the RDA with regard to the membership on their board or the select board have a concern about how they participate, well, I leave that to you, it's not, that's not, from my standpoint, the chair and the vice chair, by virtue of their position, is who I discuss this with.
Mr. LaFond, if this board takes a vote as to whether, not to, as to who to appoint to a committee, but as to whether they want to appoint people to a committee, does that bind you in any way or bind that group from taking minutes?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question.
If this board takes a vote as to whether they want an agenda item for the opportunity to appoint two people to that committee?
Okay.
Does that in any way bind that committee to take minutes? To take minutes, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, yes. I would say it would, I would say it would.
You think even, even giving this board the, not to vote on who the members are, to vote on whether they want an agenda item to appoint those two members?
Mr. Chair? I can bring light to this.
Yeah.
So, if the board of selectmen, this is my knowledge, the board of selectmen creates a committee or a subcommittee of the board of selectmen, then that is a subcommittee.
I, I understand that.
But I don't think if we appoint people to a subcommittee of the town administrator, I don't know if that's an actual formed committee that you have to keep notes and go through the open meeting law. I mean, it's a very tricky line here that you're posing here. My only issue here is that we weren't informed about it, of who's going to be on this committee, we weren't informed of who's picking going to be on it, okay, and it's our board of selectmen members, that, those are my issues that I have, okay, and that needs to be addressed in some way, shape, or form at some time to say, hey, if a board of selectmen members is going to get picked by the town administrator, whoever it may be, all right, that, I think that's a tricky situation there.
I think those are valid concerns, I do. I think, though, that as a board, there's a reason, there's a reason you pick a chairman and a vice chairman, and sometimes they have to represent the board in certain things, and I think that's what happened here. I think Mr. LaFond reached out to the chairman and the vice chairman, I think that's what happened, and if you should have been, perhaps, perhaps it's on me for not informing you quickly enough that that happened, and if that's the case, then I apologize.
No, it's not, it's, I don't, I don't fault you for it, I feel that a committee was created, okay, and it was.
Sorry, it's not a committee, we don't vote either.
Working, whatever.
It's a very different thing.
I call it a committee, but a working group, okay, but my feeling here, I'm sorry, Rick, but like I said already, is that my feeling here is that this was created by the town administrator, I understand the purpose of it, I'm not against the purpose of it, okay, because I know what was going on, all right, but my feeling here is that you don't pick and choose, you don't have your manager pick and choose the board of directors to be on a certain board or committee, and just because you're the chair and the vice chair, that that automatically puts you in, well, I can go ahead and be anything I want to be now, and as long as he tells me I can be there.
And that's not, and that's not the case, but I think in this case, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. LaFond, I think that's how that group ended up being formed in that way, and.
Yeah, it's just a matter of wanting to have input from resources that I think are important to the overall project, it's really, it's not that much different, you know, if I have a department head meeting, I choose who goes to a, who go to a department head meeting, I mean, that's, that's the way it works, so you could suggest it's the equivalent, you know, to the extent that, you know, I wanted, you know, some representation from the select board, I would naturally go to the leadership of the board, and again, I don't want to, I'm not, I don't believe, I'm not overstepping, when I go and ask for some representation, you know, I'm not appointing anybody, you know, not to, you know, you would go to the chair, and no offense to you, not to throw you under the bus, Mark, but, you know, if the chair believed that there was a different way, a better way to handle that, well, then that's, I would, Mark would have, would have, you know, gone down that road, I, I.
Again, if it's on me, then it's on me, and I apologize, but that's what happened.
I think this is bigger picture, and you guys know, I've said multiple times over my, you know, year and so here, I've always had an issue with the town administrator appointing committees and creating committees and the, you know, cherry-picking, but I think that's a good agenda item for a future meeting, because I think it goes beyond the working group we're discussing, and I respect the titles and the roles of chair and vice chair, but I do think, if I knew that, that chair and vice chair were always going to be the people on the select board who got to participate in working groups and other things, that might change if I would try to be chair and vice chair, because it kind of precludes the other three members who might be able to contribute. So I think, I think it's an agenda item for the future.
But that's not the case, all I'm saying is, I think the natural, I think the reason Mr. LaFond reached out the way he did was because he, I don't know, I think he just reached out to the chair, and then at some point, he reached out to Ms. Hewens. Again, at that first meeting, I was unaware that there was another member of the select board there until I showed up at the meeting, so.
I would, to your, to your point, Jen, I would also, you know, this is not a model for any other, you know, effort or program, this is something that's specific to this point, I don't, you know, their town administrator has certain appointing authority, very specific, and again, this board has, you know, certain veto rights to appointments, you know, I don't, I don't consider this to be, I don't think you can look at this and say that, you know, this is something that has been going on or happening, I think this is a very unique project, and again, I, it's not for me to tell you, as a select board, how you want your board to interact, but I think it's very important that there's, that the board has some representation, and so I naturally go to the leadership of that board. If you want to have a conversation about this, then, very valid, and.
And again, we're not voting on anything.
And we, we're not appointed, so it's, I think I know kind of what you're referring to in the past, but we haven't been appointed, we were just invited to show up.
Right, but it's an invitation we didn't receive, and he had just said, you know, representation of the board, I guess, I was unaware that I was being represented, so I think maybe, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think maybe we just want to know we're being represented, because we don't know. I respect the roles, titles, I understand.
I will, so I will tell you, when I was asked to participate, I didn't think I was representing the board, I thought I was just asked to participate, um, and.
I think maybe that's one of the, so, on this working group, who, can I ask who was on the working group?
We have members of the select board, we have members of the RDA, we have our fire command staff participates, town planner, now our building commissioner, now.
Our assessor.
Our assessor, right. I think that's, that's, that's the group, yeah, and, yeah, as I say, building commissioner, he started today with us, so, yeah, that's, that's the group, yeah.
And today, the chair of the Board of Assessors was there as well?
Yes.
She's not.
So I think one of the issues, and maybe can touch on what Bob said, is just, I just found, I just found out about this, that this was a group that, again, I'm not saying that the chair and vice chair are representing the select board, that there was a group like this, that, from what I'm taking, you wanted to have some, a select board representative, so obviously, you went to the chair and the vice chair because of the leadership, I can understand that, so I think just the three of us didn't know about it.
That's.
So I think that maybe, I know that's an issue I might have, is to, not who was chosen, just it would have been nice to know ahead of time, or soon after the committee, or before they were going to meet, just a quick note, hey, just to let you know, we're going to have a working group, it's going to be X, Y, and Z on it, and I chose Mark and, or Mark, you know, and again, I think this falls into a bigger issue, like Jen had said, the whole communication of what goes on, and how much we have to know and don't have to know.
And, and Mr. LaFond is aware of this, I did, I asked Mr. LaFond to inform the board of the working group, that's why the email, I believe, you sent, went out, because I did ask Mr. LaFond to inform the board.
Yeah. And we haven't actually had that many meetings.
Okay.
No, we haven't.
It's pretty early on, so...
I'm just, I think it's just a communication thing that...
That's...
But, but an email did go out to the board.
Not so much as the, who it is, it's just how.
I don't know how many weeks ago, but yes, a couple of weeks ago, I think, did send out an email to the board.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are my two cents.
Good segue. I like that. Okay. The interest of time, if you don't mind, you can read what's there, but I just want to real quickly thank GATRA, moving on to the second page. The, the radio system upgrade, the larger system upgrade throughout the town that the fire department actually has been facilitating. What has happened is the COA, as well as the GATRA buses, had, really a loss of functionality because of the upgrade, which, and realistically, from what I understand, it was not, it was not good before, before the upgrade. So, so we approached GATRA. I was able to get ahold of the right people over at GATRA, and they agreed very quickly and willingly to upgrade the radios in, in all three of our GATRA vans. Two of them have already been done, and another one is going to be done after they, they replace the vehicle. So I want to thank GATRA for doing that. It's certainly a burden that I expected that we would have to bear. And they were very, very happy to do that and do it at their own expense. Montello Street, sealed bids initially sent us out, had the wrong date, because at some point, our date had changed for the opening of the bids. Opening up the bids for the construction of the interchange next Monday, the 23rd. That's for the reconstruction and realignment of Montello Street and Route 58, and the installation of a new traffic signal. This is in anticipation of the project, Route 44 project, and is being funded through the Mass, Mass Works grant. And Capital Outlay, we had a meeting this past week. I met with the chair and the vice chair of Capital Outlay to outline and map out the process for, you know, this coming fiscal year. It was important to, because the committee's been, you know, basically defunct this past year because of some of the changeover membership, and we had a change in the bylaw this year. So taking them through the last, you know, 10-plus years as to how this, this process has been working, you know, having them understand our, our, our fund, our Capital Outlay Fund, which is rather unique. It goes, goes back about, you know, nine, 10 years. And to really lay out the existing plan, you know, the 10-year plan with whatever modifications we just made at the last town meeting, and show them how we, you know, we match up the revenues and the expenditures and the, and the program. So I have been assured that I'll be invited to a Capitol House Committee meeting to, to go over this with the entire committee. But it was a, a good, good way to help the chair and vice chair get their arms around it, so that we can map out a process for the next year. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. LaFawn, just a, a couple of things. One, because I know Mr. Belbin had asked for it to be on the agenda, the running businesses out of your home that was on your, your town administrator update.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And if you could just, just quickly, on the last item, the O and M approval of a Manny Box.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
What is a Manny Box?
A Manny Box is, okay. The Manny Box is named after Worcester Police Officer Manny Familia, who died in the line of duty on Ju, this past June 4th, trying to save a 14-year-old boy up in, up in Worcester. So since that time, there's been an effort to provide, you know, what they call Manny Boxes, in, in his honor, to be placed in and around lakes and ponds. And they include usually a buoy, floating rope, life vests, and other equipment that could be used to help prevent a tragedy. So...
Okay.
Yeah, again, sometimes I forget that, who would know this. So it is being donated by Patricia Merritt, which, and the location at Sampson's Pond is to, still to be determined after the O and M has a chance to, you know, scope it out. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Great. And if you could just quickly address the running businesses out of your home.
Well, I think that's a larger zoning, zoning enforcement.
Okay, well, you had it on your update, which is why I brought it up.
Can I?
Let me go back.
So I asked this to be put on the agenda, because it, there's a bigger issue within the town of what businesses allowed and what districts people are running businesses that shouldn't be run out of their homes without going to planning board. Do they have a business license with the town? Do they come up here to get a business license? Do they go to the permitting to get their business license from there? And it's really, there has to be a process for our residents and the neighbors of people that are running businesses out of their house. Now, there's a big difference between somebody who's running a, an accounting business or a law firm out of their house, and they're not going to have cars coming in and out, in and out and out constantly all day long, and they're not going to be open at 5:00 in the morning, all right, getting trucks ready and prepared. And then late at night, too, having actions late at night. And then there's also people that are just working from their house. They work, instead of, because of COVID, they work from the house. My son doesn't. He works for Best Buy, all right? So he's working out of his house. And, but, he's, that's different, that he's not having people come in their property. He's not waking people up at all hours of the night, in, in the morning. So I kind of would like to see some type of a process within our town to assess what businesses are being done within our town, and, and are they permitting? And my thought process was that we have, our assessing department goes out to houses and everything, and, and whatever card that they're using for that property is that they make a notation that if they appears to be running a business out of that home, that they come back here, submit it to this, this department, and they send it down to the building department, and then have they investigate it from that point. So there's a flow and say, hey, but we also should give people, if we're going to start cracking down on it with our building inspector, then give people, hey, you have 60 days, 90 days to come in compliance, all right? And fill out your paperwork, go to the planning board, come up here, wherever it needs to go, all right, to make sure that you're permitted. And if you don't, then if the building inspector comes knocking at your door and saying, hey, you're not in compliance, and your neighbors get mad and start complaining, then it's going to be addressed. Because for years and years and years, people are doing stuff on their properties and running commercial businesses. And there's been very little action. And then once we do get some action, it's, it's still, it's dragging teeth. And people want to be, want their house to be their sanctuary. They want to be able to sleep late on a Saturday morning, although I get woken up by cranberry bogs. But that's, that's a whole, I'm used to that now. But, I mean, if it was just, you said, if it was just going on once in a while, which the cranberry industry does, it goes on once in a while, it's gone, boom. But if it's going on day after day after day, I feel for these residents. So we need to do something. Something needs to be done, and it needs to be addressed. So that's why I asked it to be put on the agenda.
And maybe this is something you could bring up to our new, our new building commissioner as well.
Certainly, yes. Because I think fundamentally, it is a zoning, zoning enforcement problem, right?
It is. All right. Is that it for the update?
That's, that's it.
All right. Minutes licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Our next meeting is on Wednesday, September 8th at 9:00 a.m. So please note the different date and time. And we have four, well, we have a number of minutes here. So the minutes of June 15th, 2021, is there? Motion from the board?
I'll make a motion. We approve as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just an FYI, I had emailed Shelby this afternoon with just a couple changes. So she said the minutes in front of us
Okay.
reflect those changes. If you want to know the one from June 15th, I can tell you. It is on page two of June 15th, when it says, Hewens asked if the cost goes to Eversource or the homeowner. I asked that the following sentence be added to. Johnson stated, if the town wanted to put its own power underground, the cost would be to the town. But in this case, the cost would be to the builder. Originally, the minute said, Johnson stated, it could be the town or the builder, which gave the impression of the town could have been responsible for this particular project. But the case was that in this particular project, the town would never have been responsible. So that was the one change that I requested earlier today.
And that's reflected in these minutes?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. July 20th, 2021.
Make a motion. We approve as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. July 20th, 2021.
I make a motion. We approve. July 20th, 2021.
A second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, as I was not there.
Okay. All right. So 401. And July 26th, 2021.
Make a motion. We approve.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous.
So a quick, quick question before, step, one step back. So the next meeting is the 8th of September?
Yes.
At 9:00 a.m.?
Wednesday, September 8th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. I will not be available for that meeting.
Um, okay. All right.
The, the holidays are the 8th and the 9th. I'm sorry, the, the 7th and the 8th.
Did we? I thought that's why...
It ends Wednesday night.
All right. Well, we may...
Make it Thursday.
I think there was a reason we couldn't do Thursday. Is, is there any issue if we move that meeting to?
Thursday, I was unavailable. I have a, a prior commitment.
Okay. Um...
Again, you can still have it without me. That's fine. I...
No, I, I think it's, I think it's important that in those cases, we, we try to, can't, I'm sorry, let me, just bear with me while I bring up my calendar. So... Um, so Mr. Hoffman, let's see, Monday is Labor Day, Tuesday, Wednesday, could we do Friday morning, September 10th? Would anyone have an issue with that?
I'm over.
Okay, so our next meeting will now be Friday morning, September 10th, at 9:00 a.m. 9:00 a.m. Work for everybody?
Yeah.
All right. So Friday morning, September 10th, at 9:00 a.m.
Mr. Chairperson.
Mr. Belbin.
Can I bring back another issue that we already discussed?
Sure.
Did, for that PFAS, did, has that actually, was there another level taken? Do you know, Rick, for that house that was already tested?
Not to my knowledge. My understanding is that the, from the health agent, is that the levels were below the, below the standards. So there was no reason for the town to pursue any additional testing.
No, I know that, but was there another test done? Do you know, a repeat test?
Not to my knowledge. I, I don't know.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have the approval and release of executive session minutes of March 2nd, 2021. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You want to approve and release? I'm sorry, I should have answered that.
Yeah, approval and, approve and release.
Make a motion. We approve and release.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. April 6th, 2021.
Make a motion. We approve as written and release.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. April 2nd, 2021. I'm sorry, April 20th, 2021.
Make a motion. We approve as written and release.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Select Board Community Announcements. Mr. Hoffman?
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Hewens?
Same here, sorry. Nothing.
Nope.
Mr. Belbin?
I'm good today. Thank you.
All right. Well, I just, a couple of things. I just want to remind everybody that Carver Day at King Richard's Fair is September 4th. So take advantage of that. And I just want to congratulate everyone that was involved in Old Home Day. That's all, that we had, it was a, it was a wonderful day. And just a quick note to the board going forward, just be aware that once the town administrative screening committee finishes its deliberations, we may need to schedule and execute another meeting, or possibly even two, for some time in September to go over that. So just be aware. Select Board notes?
I, I had one quick thing I forgot to mention, is the Carver Night Out that was recently had, what a great turnout that was, even though the weather was horrible. It was an unbelievable turnout, which just shows that what a great town that Carver is. Again, thank you to all involved that organized, the police union, the fire department. It was, it was a great...
Wonderful, and the pouring rain, what a turnout.
Yeah.
What a turnout.
Wet for two days later, but it was worth it.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn and go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A, section 1, to discuss complaints and potential disciplinary action against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and not to return to open session.
I'll make that motion to reconvene, to adjourn the public session, and to reconvene our executive session for the purpose so stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Mr. Chairperson? I just want to make it clear that this is a continuation from the first part we had.
From our earlier 5:00 p.m. executive.
That's why I said reconvene.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Ms. Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Robert Belbin says aye.
Jim Bogart says aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.